Okay, we're ready to start here, folks. So, good evening and welcome to our Albany City Council meeting. And we also, first is our pledge allegiance to the flag, but we have some young gentlemen here that are going to lead us in that flag salute. We have Troop 377. And, boys, would you like to come up to the podium?
Troop or a pack?
Here.
A pack.
It's a pack. Pack, 377. On this side, would you like to come on this side? And how about, would you like to tell us your names?
I'd like to give from youngest to oldest.
Okay. And we've got Girl Scouts.
Good.
My name is Cole.
Cole? Cole?
Cole.
Cole.
My name is Bryce.
Bryce?
My name is Aiden.
Well, welcome this evening. So, this is quite a treat for us to have you be able to lead us in the flag salute. And you don't even look nervous at all. Yeah.
Not until you said that.
I actually talk in front of people a lot of times.
Oh, well, good. Oh, I can tell. Yes, yeah. Okay, we will all join you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You did a great job. So, is that the first time you've done this in front of, it is?
It's actually my last job.
Oh, okay.
I'm pretty sure I'm going to do this. I'm pretty worried about what you're going to do next.
Oh, wonderful. Well, we want to thank you so much for leading us in the flag salute. So, great job. Yep, anytime. You can come every council meeting. So, thank you.
Sweet thinking.
Okay. Mary, roll call.
Fullson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Helen.
Here.
Kapsinski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Okay. And we have another special presentation. And this one is our Albany Police Department Life Saving Awards. And it's another treat for us. We just very proud of, proud of our community and the awards that are received.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have some life-saving awards that we're going to give out. The first person I would like to ask to come up here is Officer Robert Leffert. On October 25th, 2015, a vehicle pursuit was initiated for reckless driving in the area of Knox Butte Road. A female passenger was ejected as the suspect vehicle left the roadway and into a field rolling end over end. The passenger was initially conscious but soon stopped breathing. Officer Robert Leffert began first aid and provided several chest compressions, reviving the passenger after less than a minute. The Albany Fire Department responded and treated the passenger, who was transported to Good Samaritan Hospital in Corvallis. I would like to congratulate Officer Leffert for his selfless and humane action for performing CPR on a citizen who stopped breathing. His quick actions and knowledge of CPR saved a life. Thank you. This here is a plaque. And the plaque says, "To Officer Robert Leffert, honoring his humane action for performing CPR on a citizen who stopped breathing after being ejected from a moving vehicle. Robert's quick actions and knowledge of CPR training saved a life on October 25th, 2015."
Wow.
Here's your life-saving medal. And your certificate. Thank you. Good job. Next, I would like to ask Lieutenant Travis Gibbenee and Rose Negretti to come up. On December 8th of 2015, Lieutenant Travis Gibbenee was off-duty in the lobby of Sam Fit when her friend told him about someone having a heart attack or a stroke down the hallway. Lieutenant Gibbenee asked people in the lobby to call 911, and he ran towards the area where the person collapsed. Lieutenant Gibbenee found Pat Hines on the ground in the hallway. He began to check for vital signs along with another member, Rose Negretti. Initially, Pat was breathing but soon began having abdominal respiration. Lieutenant Gibbenee asked Rose to begin rescue breath while he began to apply the chest pads for the automated external defibrillator. After using the device, they continued with CPR until the Albany Fire Department arrived. Pat was transported to the hospital and ultimately recovered. I would like to congratulate both Lieutenant Gibbenee and Rose Negretti for their selflessness and humane action by performing CPR that saved a life. Thank you. I would also like to say that Pat Hines is also here in the audience.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And thank the Albany Police Department, the Royal People, for giving the training to keep you alive.
I had no idea, Pat, Ron, that that happened. Yeah. Wow, that's wonderful.
All right, let me give you both plaques here. It says, both the plaques read the same. It says, "Honoring humane action while off-duty for performing CPR on a citizen who collapsed after suffering a heart attack." And it says Travis's quick actions and knowledge of CPR training saved a life. And this one here says Rose's quick actions and knowledge of CPR training saved a life. And your certificate? Thank you. And Travis, this is your medal. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And on behalf of the Albany City Council, we are so very proud too of our police department and citizens for stepping up to the plate and being able to help others. So, wow, that's wonderful. Thank you so much. And I can tell there's proud moms that are here, too. Yeah. Council, if you don't know Sarah, she, when did you retire from the city? How many years ago?
2008.
Oh, it's been that long. Wow. And you worked how many years here?
Just shy of 25.
Yep. Thank you.
And some of you are still sitting here.
Yep. Yep, that'd be me. Yeah. Oh, well, thank you so much.
When you started or when you ended?
Okay. Let's see. Now, we have scheduled business. And first on the list is business from the public. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? Okay, not seeing anyone. Okay, council, we have kind of a long adopt, or consent calendar, so if there isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening for discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt consent calendar?
Second.
Second?
Mm-hmm, second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. And next would be page 31. And this is the IT Project Management Services Intergovernmental Agreement. And that's probably a whole, hey, item.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment briefly that this same agreement went into the City of Corvallis Council and was approved last, last week. And I just wanted to read a couple notes here. Staff is seeking council approval to enter into an IGA with the City of Corvallis for project management support on the Corvallis Financial and Human Resource System Upgrade. This will be broken into two different phases. Phase one is evaluation and selection of a financial NHR system vendor. And phase two is the implementation of the selected solution. There are many examples of failed software implementation projects across the state and country. These failures are costly reduce people's confidence in their government and can interrupt or affect service delivery. To avoid these issues, it is important to have an experienced and skilled IT project management team. Corvallis has highly skilled technical personnel in the management, in their management and IT department. However, their staff does not have much experience with implementation of project of this scope and scale. Now, this kind of illustrates another example of sharing resources where we have shared and avoided having to pay IT consultants to perform these services. We provided similar IT services to, to the library information system where we are hosting, we're hosting five or six different library systems in our, our infrastructure. For example, City of Lebanon, Harrisburg, Syle, Sweet Home, and LBCC are all hosted within our infrastructure, and we support them at the backend of their system infrastructure. We're also providing these services for the CATRMS project for another multi-jurisdictional IT solution. So, these exchange of skills and resources are good for, for our taxpayers because we're able to extend these dollars and provide these services at a much lower, much lower cost. IT Project Management Services could run normally between $125 and $175 an hour. This also opens the door for other cities to share resources with us when the need arrives. Under this term of the IGA, Corvallis will cover the staff costs for the City of Albany's involvement in our project, and the City of Albany will not make a profit nor will subsidize Corvallis' project.
Move the requested action on page 31.
I'll second the discussion.
All right. And then Ray's got a question.
Question on, guesstimate as to how many hours of staff time will be, two questions that will be devoted to helping them make this happen. And will that in any way, shape, or form reduce any project work that we have ongoing here in Albany?
The amount of hours is going to be a little bit flexible. We're just going to be, and these are not core technical IT resources involved, is an IT project manager some of my time and some of a project coordinator from the Public Works area. So, there's not real IT core resources that support the infrastructure here involved.
Okay. Other questions? Reg?
Actually, I have a question for, for maybe Wes. I don't know. Is it, do we do other contracts with other cities at basic cost? Do we get the, like, when they, working on our fire equipment and that kind of stuff?
We have contracted with other agencies to perform services for us, as in the case of Benton County. For a number of years, they've done some of the maintenance work and continue to do maintenance work on our fire apparatus. We, you know, have done shared kinds of resources, like the fueling station with Lynn County. We have mutual aid agreements where we assist one another with both our police and fire services. And we do sort of cooperative collaborative things like emergency management. So, it's pretty common for the city to be involved in multi-jurisdictional efforts. You know, I think Jorge and I were talking today about this contract, and I think we have a unique opportunity between the two cities right now to do some things collaboratively that makes sense, given that we're cities of comparable size located 10 miles, you know, apart from one another. We have a city manager in Corvallis who knows our organization, knows, you know, how we operate, some of the strengths that we bring to the table, who also has, you know, a desire to look for ways that we can collaborate that, that provide benefit to both of us. One of the things that we're currently struggling with right now, we've had trouble getting a fire marshal hired to replace Mike Purview, who, as you know, went to the State Fire Marshal's office. And one of the options that's come up, and one of the things that we're pretty confident we could do is that if we have an emergency need for fire marshal services, that we could turn to City of Corvallis, for example. So, I think this is just a continuation of something we've done in the past, but also hopefully of the beginning of some additional partnerships that I hope will serve both, or hope will save both cities money over time.
My, my point, I know we do collaborative efforts. Are they at a no-cost, no-profit, no-loss with the other people? We do this with?
Yeah, generally, we try and make sure that we're not subsidizing somebody else's activities. You know, there are times when we have helped other jurisdictions and not charged them. We've done, and, but we get something back in return. For example, I think we, for a number of, I can't remember exactly the period of time, maybe, where's Chris? Lose, ah, there she is. She can interrupt me if I'm wrong, but I know we've provided wastewater certification services to Jefferson and to Adair Village. It's good for us. Our people get a chance to train on and look at other problems, you know, in ways that they wouldn't get to if they just did ours. And it's fairly minimal. It's, and it's common. I've done that in the other cities that I've worked at. We would often help out a neighboring jurisdiction in that way.
Okay. Thank you. Sure. Okay, any other questions? All right, there's a motion on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, back page. This would be appointments, reappointing Kim Whitley and Tina Dodd Rivera to the Human Relations Commission. And this is on page 39.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And you have one more. This would be on page 40, and that's appointing Chuck Leland to the TLT Ad hoc Advisory Committee.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, we are moving along here, and we are now on the draft San Am Albany Canal Intergovernmental Agreement with City of Lebanon. Long time waiting on this one. It's here.
I'll cover that. Thank you, Mayor. Is Mike picking me up okay, or do I need to?
Move that.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
As you mentioned, this has been a long time coming. We're obviously very pleased to be at the point where we can bring this to you tonight. Chris and Jim and I have invested a lot of time and energy over the last couple of months to work together to get to this point, so we're happy to, to finally be here. Since we've already spent several hours discussing IGA concepts, I'm only going to make a couple of points tonight. First one is, is that the, the draft IGAs that are in front of you contain all of the items that we've discussed previously and reflect the direction that we've received from council. The IGAs are only still in the draft form just because we haven't yet finished up a handful of exhibits. If you had read through in detail, you would notice there's a couple of exhibits that need some legal descriptions and need to identify specific locations of some Lebanon infrastructure. So, we still need to finish those. But the two staffs thought that this was a good point for us to check in with both of our councils, make sure you didn't see any fatal flaws, before we prepared those exhibits and brought the whole package back for formal action. Lebanon staff took their IGAs forward to their council today at an afternoon meeting, and I'm pleased to report that their council unanimously supported the language as, as you see it in your packet, and they directed their staff to finish the exhibits and bring it back for formal action. So, we're obviously hoping to get similar direction from, from you tonight. But before I turn it over, I just want to make one last statement regarding relationships between Albany and Lebanon staff. Over the last several months, Chris and I have had the opportunity to spend many hours with Lebanon staff, learning about their stormwater system specifically, and also crafting the IGA language that's in front of you. And through that process, we not only learned a lot, but I believe we've built some strong, positive working relationships, specifically with Ron Whitlatch and Rob Emmons in their Public Works Department. So, I think we're really well positioned to make this IGA work moving into the future, and I hope to be able to coordinate some regular communications between the two Public Works Departments so we can sustain the, the positive energy that we generated around these IGAs and, and keep that going into the future. So, with that, turn it over to council. Happy to answer any questions. Jim's been integral in the success of getting to this point, and so I'm sure he'll jump in as, as needed to help answer questions.
Questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to commend both staffs of Lebanon and Albany, and also the city attorneys and everything, for not, for doing what they could to get the agreement rather than us having to go one more step and bring in more, you know, legal things and, and legal actions. And so, I think this is the best way to go, and I really appreciate all the hard work. Because I know you guys didn't, you know, just didn't want to go to another meeting, but you've had plenty over the last couple of years, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? So, all right, what would you like to do?
I think we just advise staff to work on completion of the exhibits and bring them back for the final approval. Rock and roll.
All right? Okay, all right.
Thank you. Very readable document, and I enjoyed reading it.
Those were the parts that Jim didn't write.
I mean, there weren't any to, 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 and where to fours and, you know, whereses.
Okay, all right.
Speaking of that, I did note a little editorial comment that in one place you use CFS without defining what CFS is.
Oh, we can spell it out.
Right.
And normally you use the water, right? 37 CFS? Yeah. We can spell that out.
Okay.
You put it in milliliters.
That's it for the agenda, but we do have an ordinance in front of us. And Lloyd, would you like to lead on this?
Well, this is a follow-up to our discussion on Monday about amending Chapter 6 of the code that would allow educational, children opportunities for educational to raise juvenile pigs and take them to market, take them to the fair. And so, staff has developed an amendment to the ordinance, and it encompasses the primary issues we talked about, sets a time limit, has, the little pigs have to be under seven months, so they're not great big hogs for, you know, four or 500 pounders. They have to secure the written permission of the adjoining properties, and they're limited to four months. And the only thing I would comment would be that we might want to clarify the four months being four consecutive months in a 12-month period. And with those comments, I would move that we would...
Need to have a first reading.
Yeah, first, first reading.
Which one?
It's my understanding we do not need an emergency clause, that there's time available for us to normally process it, and yet allow an opportunity to still meet the Lynn County Fair timeline.
Okay, so, Jim, I want to read the...
May I assume, do I have the council consent to insert Councilor Collins' suggested language at Section 1 Sub 3? So, it would say, "For swine, a maximum of two animals under seven months of age shall be allowed on any lot of at least one acre for up to four consecutive months in a 12-month period."
For?
For educational purposes. And I believe Marilyn has been studying up on how to determine the age of the pigs so that she'll be able to enforce that condition.
Staff members can...
Who, if looks good, kill.
Do we have a swine expert on staff?
Didn't Hercules have a similar task?
Well, that is, that is a point. You don't have a swine expert.
Okay, do you want the first reading?
All right, this is an ordinance amending AMC Chapter 6.10, Keeping of Animals, to Allow Albany Residents to Temporarily Keep Juvenile Swine.
Do you want the ordinance right a second?
No.
No.
But I do want to propose an amendment.
Oh, okay.
I'm in favor of this, but I think that we ought to have a sunset clause so that a year from now, this will automatically expire unless council discusses it, gets some input from citizens and city employees and so forth to see how the program has worked. And the basis for that is there are some concerns from the police department about enforcement, as well as, you know, the comment, there's a reason that most cities don't allow pigs. And it's, it's a no-harm, no-foul clause that just forces council to consider it in a year and see how things are going. If things are going great, you, you extend the ordinance for, for another year, or a future council could even vote to even take that, that clause out. But it's not unheard of in legislation to have a sunset clause just for that purpose. Would you want to propose the sunset clause so, so we would know what the ordinance language would be? So, it would be into Section 3. A new Section 3? And, yeah, and it would be a sunset clause. This ordinance shall, the city attorney wrote something down real quick for me, so it's, he can read it, I can read it. I can read his writing, it's not that. This ordinance will automatically expire one year from the effective date hereof unless renewed or extended prior to expiration. That's the sunset clause.
Is there anything that's going to bring that to the attention of the council? Because a lot of times things, okay, they expired now. What, what makes us think about bringing it back up?
Someone puts it on their calendar and reminds you. Say their pig with...
That would be me. Never mind.
That's Marilyn with job security for another 12 months.
I understand from procedural position your comment, Bill, but I question what the message is we're sending to the 4-H. Are they going to remember that it's only good for a year, effective this year? Or will they move into preparation for next season and say, you know, in 2016, it was okay? I just question how they're going to respond and how they're going to know that.
I think it's also easier for the council and the city maybe to deal with this issue. If complaints do come up, I appreciate your input. We will be looking at this in a year and be able to reevaluate it, and maybe it wasn't such a great idea. It makes it a little less contentious when that's automatically on the agenda to review in a year. And in essence, gives us a little bit of an escape clause without ruffling too many feathers. I mean, there's already people that, I've had some emails today, they want to raise a full-size hog and sell it in their restaurant, and on, and on, and on. It's kind of like Wes said the other night, I don't know that you want to go down this path. So, it's, it's just a pressure release valve, or any anecdotal name you want to give it to give us an option to look at it next year.
Or you could say it the opposite direction. This shall be brought back up to council for review X amount of time.
Sure, I'm not opposed to that.
That way, it's not telling anybody that, you know, if we forget it, that, that someone is now not obeying the law. If, if there's a complaint, there will be all kinds of reasons why we would bring it back up and, you know.
Sure. The sunset clause is just a mechanism that I've seen used at the state level time and time again, and, and that's just, you know, my proposal is amendment. Yes, no, change it, offer something else.
Yeah. First point is, we first heard about this Monday. And I know we sometimes kind of hurry things through without thinking, you know. I can appreciate Chief Latanzio's concern about, okay, who's going to answer these complaints? You know, it's not like they don't have enough to do. And I'm sure the city manager doesn't want to go out there and check on the painting. But, well, he wants to. But I, I don't know. I don't know if, I mean, if we're going to read the ordinance, I mean, I'd probably vote no on, on reading the first ordinance, give us another couple of weeks to make sure that we, I mean, I've got some emails, too, some for and some totally against. And there are others, most other cities, from what I understand, in the state allow pot-bellied pigs because they're indoor, but not outdoor. You know, and so, I, I don't know. The more I thought about it, the more I thought, you know, are we opening up a Pandora's box?
So, sort of what we need to know though is for Bill's amendment, do you want that added to this since we're on the first reading? Is there, did you make that into motion, Bill? Was it?
No, but I will.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second? A second to sunset clause?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. So, any, any more discussion on the sunset clause? Dick?
Yeah, I, I think it would be better to bring it up at a scheduled time to review rather than have it automatically just sunset. Because as Floyd mentions, the group that wants to do this may think, hey, this was nice, we'll do it again next year, and then suddenly...
nice, we'll do it again next year, and then suddenly, they're outlaws, and some people feel worse about being an outlaw than others, but I think that would be a shame.
Okay, any more discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Walton?
No.
Collins?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Callum?
No.
Kopfsinski?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
Four, no.
Okay, all right, sorry, Bill.
That's how it works.
So, so we've had a first reading, and...
That's the, we haven't, we haven't dealt with the other option, no. And two of it, I, I think it ought to be looked at in, in a year.
May I suggest that you not put that in the ordinance, however, because if you put it in the ordinance, you create confusion if you were to decide to review it earlier than the one year. You could simply direct staff to bring the matter back to your attention a year later.
That's fine, as far as I'm concerned.
We'll take note, I mean, the same note that Marilyn would have made to herself to bring it up for review as a sunset, she can certainly make to...
Right. It's like any ordinance, if, I would imagine if we hear complaints, then we can bring up the ordinance anytime.
Of course.
So, yeah, it's going to be more complaint-driven, but...
Mayor, another option you're throwing out there, if the council did want to have something in the ordinance, would, could maybe some language that said that the ordinance would automatically renew in a year unless terminated by council, so that that way, if there are complaints, then you could do that, but Jim's shaking his head.
I'm sorry, but all ordinances automatically renew unless there is, unless there...
Well, no, you would have a year, it would be, it would be a one-year timeline, and then would be extended unless terminated.
I'm not going to argue.
[inaudible]
No.
See me in my office in the morning.
We'll talk about this later.
It would work, but he says no. Yeah. Okay, so...
So, we're done with that there?
Yeah.
Aye. I guess I renew, while I am in favor of letting kids have wiener pigs to raise and learn about and all that good kind of stuff, we are going down the same road that we went down with business in residential areas, where we deal with certain people, instead of what the problem is, we deal with what the pig looks like. I mean, there is a problem with pigs if they are not taken care of with smell. I mean, there's no question about that. And anyone who's ever been to a, a commercial pig facility, you know, you don't have to get close to know it's a problem. But we're making the problem with the pig instead of the results of the pig, the results of the, of the person who's in charge not taking care of the pig. And, you know, I just, I object to that, and I've had my say, so that's it.
Aye.
Have, have you ever heard, or has anybody ever heard of a problem with these small animals up to seven months of age causing a problem?
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
I mean, these small animals at seven, given what my son's pigs look like about a year ago, when they were seven or eight months, they were like two-hundred-and-some pounds.
Oh, geez, okay.
Pigs, pigs have no sweat glands.
They get big fast, and they're smelly.
Pigs have no sweat glands, so they have to have a, have a way of getting rid of the heat, so they either are sprayed, or they wallow, and when they wallow, they make mud, and, 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 and. So, yes, you can have the same problem.
Be slow.
Just whether or not you take care of it.
Scraps.
I think that's why it's a project for kids.
Okay, so does the council want a second reading on this? If so, you need to...
No.
No second reading?
Not tonight, no.
And I, I checked with them, and thirty days is fine.
Well, it wouldn't be thirty days if it's just next, next council meeting, right?
It'll be forty-five days.
Yeah.
Two weeks is another reading.
It'll be two weeks until you pass it, and then it'll be effective a month later.
Unless you...
Once it passes, then it's another month.
But if you put an emergency clause in it, it wouldn't be.
But the ordinance I just read didn't have an emergency clause, you told me not to use that one. You can add an emergency clause at the next reading if you wish.
It must have been somebody else, Jim, I didn't say that.
Somebody who will remain nameless.
Oh, I see.
Seems like an emergency to me.
Doesn't seem like an emergency to me.
Well, forty-five days?
You can always, if the council wishes to add an emergency clause to the ordinance after the second reading, you can always do that.
Okay.
That's right.
That's fair, that's fair. I just wanted to think.
We will accommodate you.
I mean, the number of, when this went out, and I got three emails back before, before it showed up here, and if you get that in a matter of a couple of days, I don't know what's going to happen in thirty days. Maybe nothing, but people need a chance.
Okay, so, our next council meeting then would be March, March ninth one would be the second reading for this ordinance.
Sounds good.
Okay, okay. Now, business from the council, and Bessie, anything?
I don't think so.
Okay, Bill, Dick, okay, Rich?
Yes. I spoke with the folks at the expo, and they, they said they had a customer of theirs that was in the expo last year and had thirteen thousand people show up, but when they're dealing with, gee, do they want to show up again, and there's a whole, oh, yes, let's do it, let's do it, let's do it, the people from that organization dropped kind of a bomb on him, saying, well, gee, you know, other places in Texas and in one of the Carolinas give us some economic support. I asked what kind of economic support that was, and the answer that came from the people at the organization was, well, basically, they would have gotten the facility for free, having used transient lodging tax or money out of some account someplace to cover it. And when I asked Randy what kind of number that was, he said their, their number for the whole thing was twenty-nine thousand dollars for that, for that period of time. That's not just the rent, that's rent and other things. I told him I would bring this up. I'm of the opinion that, you know, if, we're not getting enough coming back out of it, we don't want to do it. I don't, we have not done this in the past, and I think if we start doing it, it's kind of like Kara's problem with forgivable loans, everyone then wants one. So, I said I'd bring it up, I brought it up. If you all remain silent, I will go back and say, nobody said let's do it.
All right, anything else?
Anything else? Didn't have enough.
All right, Ray? Okay, Floyd?
No.
Okay, and I didn't have anything then this evening, so Wes?
You had a request of staff, okay, you requested, the council had requested of staff on Monday to bring back a report on the sign at the airport, and Chris, I believe, is prepared to give a brief discussion of the sign while she's coming up. I can tell you that we did a little research, and thanks to Mary's good work, we're able to locate a lease agreement. The sign is not owned by the city, it's, of course, it is on land owned by the city, and in the past, we've had an agreement where we leased the land to the owners of the sign, and in this case, the original owners were the Scots who built it, along with the hotels, and that they were to pay forty-two dollars a year for the privilege of the sign being located on our property. Apparently, the electronic version of the sign, the part that, the message board, has not worked for some time, and there have been requests that the city fix the sign, but the city, it's not the city sign.
It's not owned by the city.
Yeah, we don't own it, exactly. So, in any event, Chris, did you want to add to that brief report?
Sure. I don't have a whole lot more to add, other than when I started managing the airport, Mr. Patel, who owns the motels, now owns the sign, and he approached me more than once to ask that the airport contribute to repairing the sign, and my response to him was always that, A, the airport doesn't have very much money, and it didn't seem worthwhile investment of airport funds to repair a sign that the airport really didn't get a whole lot of benefit from. So, I never, I always declined to help him pay for the sign. The, the only other thing to note is that we used to have a lease with Mr. Patel for a small office space in the FBO building in order to help meet the city's sign code requirements, which are that the sign has to be related to the use of the property, and so, we had an office space lease for him as well. As far as I know, the Airport Commission has been interested in the sign and has gotten some quotes to, with sign companies to come take a look at it and see how much it might cost to repair, which it apparently is going to cost tens of thousands of dollars now to get the sign to be working in a way that is reliable, because it has not been maintained. That's basically all I know. You know, there are small panels on the sign that say Albany Municipal Airport, I think there's a panel for the expo, other than that, the sign has never really been used to advertise for airport events, as far as I know.
Do we pay the electrical bill for it?
No.
That's, that's a separate meter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, that's paid by the hotels?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and did we ever have a certain timeline for that lease agreement was expired, or is just for the life of the sign?
Well, it's interesting, I, so Mary found the original lease with the Scots, and she sent me a copy, which was a thirty-year lease, which is our typical land lease for hangars or other buildings out at the airport, so it doesn't expire until 2030. However, I don't know that that lease was transferred to Mr. Patel, I'd have to, we'd have to do some more digging to see, to see where, if there's a new copy of that lease or, or where it is. Also, one of the things that Mary found in the record, the council record, is what appears to be an agreement for the Scots to have their land lease waived, which was forty-two dollars or something a year, in, in return that the city would receive some advertising time on the scrolling reader board. I have never heard of that agreement, I mean, it's there, it's printed in paper.
Remember that, yeah, because when we did the sign to permit it to be on the city property, we were to get the benefit from it.
Right. So, I think there was some loss of institutional knowledge between the transfer of the sign from the Scots to Mr. Patel, which I assume was a direct, I don't know how that relationship went, and between the transfer of airport responsibilities with staff, we never, as far as I know, enforced our right to have things advertised on the sign, and we, as far as I know, never received any land lease payments for the lease, the land that the sign sits on.
Kind of an example why we probably shouldn't always have maybe an ordinance that's reviewed in a year, because we forget about things, and, so I was here when we did that agreement up, and I forgot about it, so...
We have a little better system now for our land leases, but that one I have never seen, so...
Yeah.
Well, this is just a pure subjective question, do folks perceive that there would be enough value to the city to have the city reacquire, try and reacquire the sign and have it fixed up? Would we be enough benefit to the city anyway, shape or form, to actually use the sign if it was actually functioning adequately?
Reacquire would be the wrong word, we never owned it.
Yeah, we've never owned it.
You don't own it now.
No.
To acquire, okay.
I'm, I mean, from my perspective as the airport manager, I don't know that the airport is greatly going to benefit from having that sign, because I think the airport gets good advertisement, because it sits right there on the interstate, and we don't have enough events to really, you know, make a reader board, use of a reader board. There might be other city uses or county uses for that reader board.
Well, it was supposed to have been for the expo events.
Right, and I think they have done some things on the reader board for different, you know, the fair, or different things, but I'm, I'm not sure.
That was the main thing, is they wanted more advertising for the expo, and then when the hotels came in, that's when, it was Wayne Scott, that was his name, yeah, he said, well, how about if I pay for the sign, put it on the city's property, and we can advertise, you know, for the expo.
It's a pretty, you know, it's very interesting, as well, ODOT also has weighed in on that sign, because at one point, there was a complaint of the rate of scroll, and ODOT has rules about those things, and so, I think there was a complaint hearing about that sign as well, so it's been an issue.
Yeah. Well, we have the same problem up and down our streets, rate of scroll. To, to the point, they're talking, what they were talking about was putting in a larger, all in just a single sign encompassing a larger space, or the same amount of space that's in all three signs put together, with the Patel's paying the vast majority of the price and the county paying a piece of it, and us paying a piece of it for use, kind of for, for city events, whether that's stuff downtown here, or whatever, because it can be changed, with the new LED signs, you can change those ten times a day if you want But at any rate, the other, the other thing about that particular sign is it's already there, and what they would be doing is upgrading the sign. And because it is already there, there are other things you can put on it, rather, you know, we can put stuff down here. If, if you go right now and want to put a sign alongside I-5, you can't even, you can't get a sign put up and use it to announce anything downtown or whatever, unless it's free. And then, there is quite a process through ODOT. That's about where I ended my research, when I was talking about it however many months ago. So, I guess at this point, do we want to find out what putting a sign there would cost, in conjunction with, well, what it costs, and then who pays which portion of it, what rights there are to it, all that kind of stuff is all up in the air. But before we know whether or not it's a good deal, I think we have to know what, what's possible.
Yeah, and also, if we haven't been receiving, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but how long's the sign been up?
Two thousand?
Two thousand sixteen years, you know, I mean, so if we've received no payments, which, it's kind, it's kind of like, okay, why aren't we receiving payments?
They were forty-two dollars a year, Bessie, and I think the, the deal that was struck was that the city would get some messages, as we wanted messages, to be placed on the message reader board.
So, there's no money, it's, it's...
Right, and there was, apparently, for a period of time, there were messages, I mean, I don't know, I've lived here eleven years, and to be honest with you, I don't ever recall seeing the sign, so...
I remember when it first got up, you know, and it was kind of nice, because there were, you know, events, and, and it's a shame that they stopped it, but I think what, number one, is you have to find out if the lease was transferred to Patel, because otherwise, he would have no say.
I, I actually, you want to do that, you're liable to have to tear the sign down.
Well, I mean, it's got to be legal, though, I mean, you can't just, I mean, why would you...
What do you mean, why would you tear the sign down?
Yeah, why would you have to tear it down?
Because if it's no longer the, if you don't, if somebody else owns it...
We've never owned it.
Yeah. See, if, and if you don't own the sign, you then don't have the right to have it there.
Well, and was it Wayne Scott, or did it list the hotels in that agreement?
The original agreement was with the Scots.
And it didn't say hotel, which hotel or anything?
No, it was just with the two Scots. No, it was just with the two Scots.
With the names.
Okay.
Why don't you just direct me to take a look at the lease, I haven't seen the lease since 2000, apparently, and the other thing is, if the sign is not functioning, it may be very well that the property, whomever owns the sign, if we can figure that out, either has abandoned it on our property, in which case it's ours, or would sign it over to us. And perhaps there are site agreements that could be made about some nominal advertising benefit if we determine who owns it, but why don't we look a little further, before you talk, before we do an investigation into how much it would cost to fix it, let's see if, how good our claim is it, is to it, and let's see if the owner, once assumed, or once identified, might be willing to transfer it to us.
And the owner's deceased.
Well, the original.
Well, we don't know who, we don't know whether or not that sign was assigned, or whether the lease, if you will, was assigned or not, do we?
Well, as a matter of function, the Patel's have used it for, and were putting messages on it up until last year, is my understanding.
Sure, Mr. Patel has always been the person who's been in charge of the sign, now whether the lease was transferred, the land lease was transferred to Mr. Patel, I don't know, I'd have to go, we'd have to look some more and see if we can find it, I have never seen it.
Well, the lease would either be to an individual, or to an organization, or it would be pertinent to, to property, since we own the property, it's not pertinent to that property, it could be pertinent to one of the hotels, I don't know, but the fact that they've used it doesn't necessarily establish ownership, I'm just saying that before you spend too much council time debating it, let, let's, let us take a look at it and see what we think, and it wouldn't hurt, if the council's okay with this, to speak to Mr. Patel, he might be happy to get rid of it if it's not working, in hopes that.
He's saying, well, I didn't hear him say it, I heard Leah say it, which was, you know, he had just talked to her, that he would like to pay at least 50% to get a new sign there, I mean, I mean, it's, it's not like he wants to walk away.
Well, even then, if we, if we could formalize an understanding of what he wants to do, if we, if we determine that he is the one, then we could come back to you and say that we have a more formal proposal, then it would make sense perhaps to evaluate what the cost would be, so that you can decide whether or not the benefit warrants the expense.
I think that'd be a good direction, just have Jim look at the lease and see what we can and cannot do.
And we can take it.
So, yeah. All right, it's yours now.
Oh boy.
Okay, any other questions, Chris?
I have another issue as well, Chief Flotanzo and Chief Bradner here to give.
Thank you, Chris.
A brief update on the, the progress of the two stations.
Oh, good. Hey, yep, it's, looks like a big house is being moved, boy, they sure did that fast, yeah, amazing how they do it.
Good evening, Mary and Council, the police property currently, we are in the process of clearing some of the brush, and some of the trees were moved off the property. We received the 90% plans in January, they're currently working on the process of putting the paperwork in for the building permits, they're supposed to have that uploaded, hopefully by tomorrow, is what I'm told, and then after that, they're going to go through the process of selecting, the contractors getting pre-qualified, and then we're looking to go out to bid in April. So far, everything is within budget, we haven't had to make any other major changes within 90% plans, so as we did with the 60% plans.
An update on the fire station property is very similar, 90% plans have been submitted, and we've provided comment and feedback to McKenzie on those, and just like the police property and project, the permit submissions are supposed to take place this week. Also, our project is and remains on budget, we've been working with ODOT very closely concerning the street scape work on Lion Street, and I know Stacy told me yesterday that they had a meeting with George Crandall, and with ODOT to go over, to make sure that the Kara issues were being met, as well as the city issues, so that's been moving forward. You've, you've probably noticed a number of activities going on in this, on the site, Richard's cleaners was demolished about a month or so ago, the Ralston building was dismantled, and we were able to harvest a good amount of wood to reuse in the new structure. That wood, other wood that we didn't use has actually gone to different woodworkers, we were contacted by one up in Washington, I don't remember exactly where in Washington, but they were asking for some history of the building, they, they build specialty products out of reclaimed wood, and so we were able to provide them some information about that. Trees also, like the police station property, all the trees have been cleared around the project, preparing for that, and as the mayor said, the Edward Jones House has been lifted, and it's currently sitting on wheels, and this Sunday morning at 7:00 AM, it'll take the five-block truck down the road and be planted at Fifth and Jefferson, I'm sure it'll be a very interesting event to watch, and I plan to, to be there to, to watch that move down the road.
It's at 7:00 AM, not at 5:00 AM?
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM's the last time I have heard, as far as.
It's amazing how fast they can get those lifted.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that whole project, it was like half the house was just up one day.
Yeah, just, you know, put the house in two, and geez.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
That's cool.
So, the last thing I wanted to talk about was just to update you on the new location for the crews during that timeframe, I told you before that our day staff that work there, our deputy farm marshals, will be moving into the Farmers Insurance Building, which we purchased, it's on the far north portion of that property, they will be working out of that building, and then when we're ready to move back in, they'll, or ready to move in, I should say, to the new station, they'll move back into that location, and then we'll demolish the Farmers Insurance Building. The, the emergency responders, we're working diligently on a site at 1120 Southeast Hill Street, if you're familiar with Crabtree Automotive, or Meyer Roofing, it's the Meyer Roofing location, they moved out, or they are in the process of moving out the end of this month, and so the timing was perfect, the location was centrally located, and, and the, the facility was very appropriate for our use, so we've been working on securing everything that we need to make, make that become a reality. Our target is to move the crews, move the personnel out in May, and then demolish the building in June, and then have it ready to go for construction, site ready to go by July.
Yeah, wow, really getting close.
It is, it's exciting.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it is, so, so when, so what are you gonna be putting some of the apparatus then on Hill Street?
We'll put one engine, and the plan at this point in time is to put one engine, and the battalion chief will be out of there, and those will be the only vehicles that will be there.
And the engine will be able to be indoors or outdoors?
We'll have a temporary shelter put up, basically, kind of like something you'd put your RV in, I guess, if you will, but it'll be enclosed with doors on either end, and so they'll be able to either back it in or drive through, depending on how we set it up on the property.
Yeah, wow, so, yeah.
So then where's the rest of the equipment gonna be?
So, we'll put some of it in different locations, we have a shop out at Station 13, and we'll fill those bays up during the, during the construction, we've talked with Tangent Fire District to our south about actually housing one of our reserve vehicles out there, so it'll be close enough that we can get it if we need it, it won't be a first-out apparatus, and, and I've got a battalion chief who's been working on the relocation of all the other equipment during the construction.
So, for on Hill, so you said at the Farmers Building, what will be there?
That'll be just the day staff, the deputy fire marshals, community paramedic physicians.
Oh, okay, so, but out at Hill Street, will a ambulance be there?
No, no, we don't currently staff an engine on a regular basis, occasionally, we'll have an ambulance out of Station 11, but not on a regular basis, and so during the 15-month timeframe, we just, we'll never have a medic unit out of that station, it'll just be an engine and the battalion chief, the shift commander.
Okay, yeah, well, because I noticed yesterday, down in South Albany, so there was an ambulance, which was Station 11, down there.
Yeah.
So you don't have, so an ambulance isn't from Station 11 then anymore?
Not on a regular basis, no, it depends on where our staffing is for the day, if we are above our minimum staffing, we may end up having a medic unit come out of the station, but that's not a frequent occurrence.
Just send them out in the trucks, yeah.
Yeah, we'll just send them out on the engine, which is what we do 98% of the time now.
Yeah, okay, questions? All right, it's exciting, getting close, so, all right, thank you chiefs. Okay, anything else, Wes? All right, does staff have anything, council have anything else? So, okay, so then our next meeting will be a work session March 7th, and regular session is on the 9th, and with that, we're adjourned.